I'm here to give the name.
I used my great conversation as far as.
Oh, for sure.
Say bro, very good seeing.
I'll find out. You're giving the.
They are.
Got to give a tab in August and it's set right.
Where she goes today. Come out the door. That always said it. Bring back to us.
I don't got right there.
Right here. August sixteenth.
PM?
He actually told me.
Okay, go ahead. How's your rest?
Good deal.
Thank you all for coming tonight. We're going to begin with our invitation with Reverend Larry Lane. He's the pastor of Oak Hill Church in Nazarene. Please stand.
Spray together. Father God, I give you thanks today for your goodness and your faith on us. Thank you, God, for bringing me to this town and thank you for this town, this city, God, and what you have in store for it. Ready to bless each one of these council members as they do the work in the business of this city and others who are presenting today and just pray that your your leadership, your guidance would be very evident that wisdom would abound in this place, God, so that this can be the very best community we can possibly have for us. And we pray all these things in the name of Jesus Christ, our Savior.
Please follow me with our pledge of allegiance.
Stands one nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
I now call the order. The city council meeting. Our city manager will now call our role.
Mayor Charles Briscoe.
Here.
Council at large, Hannah Bass.
Here.
Counselors from Ward One, Terry Van Busskerk.
Here.
Roger Evans.
Here.
Diana Janey.
Here.
Counselors from Ward Two, Tim Buskus.
Present.
PJ Elder.
Here.
Chris Yell.
Here. Thank you. We're going to now have our winners of our photography contest and Josh, if you would come forward, please. Thank you, sir.
There, counsel. This spring, we conducted a youth photography contest from March twenty ninth through June twenty seconds. And in the hopes of engaging our youth to send in some photos, get them outside. We had two different divisions, twelve and under and twelve and up. And we have our grand final winner here, Mr. Jason Donnelly with his family. Come on up, Jason. Our grand prize is a hundred dollars. Tyler, do you have his pictures? And Tyler's going to pull up his pictures here. Mr. Jason, I want to present you with your hundred dollar check, buddy. Congratulations. Yeah, nice job.
Appreciate it. Do it again. There you go.
Thanks, Al Jason. Thank you, buddy, for participating. Tyler's bringing up his photos here. Two different photos, one of nature and one of landscape.
Well, we have a little special, little sad thing going on right now. I'm going to leave that up to Demeter. But it's a good for someone.
But tonight is Day Day's last council meeting, so we couldn't let it go by without not recognizing him. So come on up, Day Day. He's sad over it, but I'm the one that's releasing that because I I don't know how many of you know Day Day, probably a lot of you, because he knows everybody. I have never been able to ask him a question that he couldn't answer. So anytime I need something, I call Day Day and he knows what happened or he knows the person took the call. He he has everybody's phone number in his phone. And it's been a real joy working with him over. I've been here twenty six years. And it's been just a joy to work with him, to have him, to have somebody out in the public that we know is taking care of them. It's not being mean or hateful to them, not not putting them off. And well, he is mean and hateful sometimes. I saw Mike working, but not to the public. So we are going to miss him tremendously. I think I'm going to still have to call him sometimes and ask him what to do. But so we have a proclamation for Day Day and I'm going to read it. Whereas public work services provided in our community are an integral part of our citizens' everyday lives. And whereas the support of an understanding and informed citizenry is vital to the efficient operation of public work systems and programs such as streets, highways, sewer, and parks. And whereas the health, safety, and comfort of this community greatly depends on these facilities and services. And whereas for almost thirty seven years, Day Day Kirk has dedicated his time, knowledge, and trained experience to our community and has played many roles in improving the way we manage our city through the street department, wastewater treatment, as public works director and assistant to the city manager. And whereas Day Day Kirk, a true family man blessed with loving wife Amy and son Josh and his beautiful grandchildren, still continually demonstrated dedication in the duties he has performed during his time with the city. And whereas Mr. Kirk is entering into this new journey of retirement. And whereas in recognition of his dedication and in celebrating with him his retirement, the City of Oak Hill expresses our deepest gratitude to Mr. Kirk for his outstanding and dedicated service to our community. Now therefore be proclaimed that Charles Briscoe, mayor of the City of Oak Hill, in conjunction with the Oak Hill City Council, does hereby honor Paul David Day Day Kirk on this eighth day of July, twenty twenty four for his enduring commitment to the citizens and the City of Oak Hill. We're going to have a retirement party for him on Wednesday at the Lewis House. Thursday at the Lewis House. From eleven to two, if you all would like to come by and say bye to Day Day.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Can we deny this? Like deny his resignation?
Well, I'm not filling out. I'm not filling out his retirement papers.
I was wondering if we could make a motion to hold this off for a couple of years.
Unridden. Get him out of here. Negotiate me for thirty six years.
About forty five years. He went to the cemetery the entire time.
He had to work with.
No, actually, I was in the same class as his older brother, Jeff. Daddy was a year behind us. Jason is his older brother, that little snot nose, but he comes with dates. Thank you, guys. All right, I think we've all read the past minutes. Can we just go ahead and get a motion to approve those? Unless we have a question on those minutes.
Make a motion to approve the minutes.
I'll second.
Motion to properly move the second that we approve the minutes. All those in favor? All opposed? Motion to approve the minutes is carried. Treasurer's report, thank you. All right.
I move to accept the treasurer's report.
Can we get a second?
I'll second it.
Motion's been properly moved. Second, that we accept the treasurer's report. Any questions? All those in favor? All opposed? All right. No correspondence today, and it looks like we do not have any citizens' comments. I don't think anyone made any comments on it. All right. So we will move along to unfinished business. Number one is to appoint a building commission member.
And so last month, you asked us to advertise for interest in the billing commission. I did get four letters. However, two of those were did not live in city limits. So I had I sent them back a reply and told them that they weren't eligible for the building commission. So we have two people here that are interested. Dreama Stevens. And that was the letter that she had written. And Janine Robinson.
Is Dreama here?
She is not here. Dreama lives in Mandan and she it she's a young girl. She came to our billing commission meeting and was very interested in that. But other than that, I don't.
Make a motion to nominate Janine Robinson.
Moved then second that we hire, I mean, not hire a point. Janine Robinson as to billing permission. All those in favor? All opposed?
Mayor, if I could. If I could ask the meeting to reach out to Dreama Stevens and say we'd really appreciate it and there's probably other capacities that.
And that's what I told the two people that didn't live in city limits, that we had some committees that did require that I would reach out to them. One of those was Amanda Davis and the other one was he owns never contracted.
Bradley Scott. Bradley.
I think his name wrote off.
All right, moving on to number two, police hiring.
I believe I provided everybody with the letter, two letters from the Civil Service Commission. The reason the hiring under the ninety day emergency plan, the there's not a viable list at the current time. It's close. But I wanted to go ahead and get these two officers hired. They are both certified officers. One coming, the first one coming from Charleston Police Department. He lives here, works in has a family here. The other one works at Fayetteville and desires to come to Oak Hill where he resides. So I believe it'll be good fit for.
I will move that one of the time, I guess. I move to approve the hiring of Keely Higginbottom.
I'll second.
And second, that we hire Keely Higginbottom to the Oak Hill Police Department. All those in favor? All opposed? Motion is carried.
Mayor, I'll I'll go on to the second person. I'll be I move that we authorize a hiring of Chase Hart.
Motion to probably move the second, yes, sir.
Before you take the vote, I would like to recuse myself from this vote.
Please note that Council McGill has refused himself from this vote. Motion's been made and second that Chase Hart be hired to the Oak Hill City Police Department. All those in favor? All opposed? Thank you. I told the chief earlier that the guy's doing a really good job. There's some screaming children the other day and we headed to my house. I don't have any scared the kids. Or does the girlfriend wasn't there, tied the radiator as usual? No, just kidding. They got the guy that were really ruining us. And I appreciate the fact that the neighbors, you know, were letting out for each other in this in this area. So it's been great. Yeah, it's on TV too, folks. No, I'm just kidding. Allegedly, right? We do have a correspondence, so. We're going to move into our new business. Number three, street paving, the bid opening and acceptance.
We had a pre-bid conference on this, a mandatory pre-bid conference in June. And so there were two people, two companies there, and I have bids from both of those companies. The first one is Southern West Virginia Paving. And their bid is two hundred thirty three thousand, two hundred dollars. And the views that they have. Everything else that we asked for. And then the next bid is from AAA Paving and Sealing in from Princeton. Their bid is two hundred and thirty four thousand dollars. Two hundred thirty three thousand, two hundred.
What's the name of this company?
AAA Paving and Sealing.
What what is our budget for the bidding?
Three hundred thousand. Tyler's estimate was three hundred fifteen thousand. But I think I only did, I only think I only just three hundred is about cheap.
We overestimate.
Based on the dollar amount against West Virginia Paving, turn thirty three thousand, two hundred. Street painting, a bit opening and acceptance.
Streets of Eastport.
Trump Street, which is also Summerly Road and it's just the beginning of Trump before it goes into the mobile home court there. Twenty Third Street, Twenty First Street, Hop Street, Roman Avenue, Chestnut Avenue, Summerly Avenue, and then Park Drive, which is the park that we that our guys have dug out and they have some gravel there. It would be where we're extending that road and making it bigger.
Anyone want to make a motion to? All right, we do have a vote for the second that we accept the offer from West Virginia Paving.
Mayor, I, especially the man, city manager, and especially Tyler Bragg, they have a Tyler keeps a good historical record of our paving. Sure, and so great GIS tool, I'm pretty sure.
Can you all have a map of anybody who places seen that I can show you on your op-ads and show us the exact area and see. If anybody sees that, I can show you my back and you can see what what exactly makes sure where where it's set.
Thank you. All those in favor? All opposed? Motion is carried. Thank you. Moving on to number four, consider approval of PRO contract with the Fayette County Board of Education.
This is the contract that we have been proving every year that you've been proving. This year, the amount has raised a little to sixty three thousand, four hundred and fifteen dollars. And we will report education quarter over for that when they pass. Very cool. When they pass on time. Save for our officer. Let's also bring on works for middle school. So do you need a motion? Yes, I'll make a motion that we accept this contract with the Board of Education for the sixty three thousand, four fifteen.
Motion's been properly moved. The second that we consider the approval or they will do the approval of pro contract with Fayette County Board of Education. Any other questions on the motion? All those in favor? All opposed? Motion's carried. Number five, call severance budget revision.
No, there's revision. At the end of the year, at the end of twenty four, on June thirtieth, our fund balance and the call severance account was four thousand, thirty six dollars. We budgeted fifteen hundred to be our fund balance, so we have to increase that fund balance by two thousand, five hundred thirty six. So I've increased the fund balance and to offset that, we have put that same amount into streets and highways.
Do you have a motion?
Accept this proposed call severance budget amendment.
I'll second.
Second, the call severance budget. All of you favor? All opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to number six, boards, commissions, and committees, department, or reappointment of civil service commission member and planning commission minimum.
We have on some service commission, Jeremy Crozier is his times of his term has expired and he has agreed to start the campaign if you all would like for him to. And then on the planning commission, Kate Ballard's. And then on the planning commission, Kay Ballard's term is up, and she has also agreed to serve again if you all would like for her to do that. So there we two. That's only two, and all of the, all of the things, so. You all agree to vote?
We're going.
And these are three-year terms.
We're going separately.
We can.
Okay. I'll make the motion for Jeremy Crozier to be reappointed to the Police Civil Service Commission.
Do you need a second?
I second.
Motion's been properly moved in second, Jeremy Crozier be appointed. All those in favor?
Ah.
All opposed? Motion is carried. Need another motion from Ms. Ballard?
I'll make a motion for Kay Ballard to stay.
Do we get a second?
I'll say it, come in.
All right, all those in favor?
Ah.
All opposed? Motion carried, Kay Ballard. Thank you, guys. Um, kind of the final reports, as normal, we usually just go through them. Uh, we do have Allison here with us tonight. She has handed me something. Do you want to collaborate on that?
Sure.
Okay, and then we'll, just hold it. I'll be shocked.
Take a vote.
No, not for you, but except all of the votes. So you're good.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah.
So guys, I appreciate your patience. Uh, my family and I did take vacation last week, so it was a little bit late getting, uh, everything up to date on your, uh, economic development progress report, so I didn't get that into the file till today. That's the reason. Uh, I gave everybody a paper copy of it. Um, so basically, report over the last, uh, month, what we've got going on in the economic development world, um, for community engagement, we've got a couple of things. Uh, our community engagement task team meeting is tomorrow. Uh, it's going to be two P M., and I believe it's in this office. Uh, for community engagement, um, that one's starting to get more and more exciting and more and more important, um, with, uh, our comprehensive plan, uh, coming up. One of the, the most important foundational aspects of a comp plan is it's got to be something that our community helps us build and that our community believes in, because if we don't have that buy-in, then all we're doing is wasting our time and money. Uh, so their effective input in that is super important. So what we're going to be able to do with this task team is, uh, we've identified thirteen basic neighborhoods. Um, you know, roughly with sticky notes on this board, honestly, of, uh, where our folks live in Oak Hill. And we want to make sure to have representation from each of our neighborhoods, uh, within this group, so that we can make sure that as we're making sure we've got community input for the comprehensive plan, um, we're not forgetting anybody, because, you know, so often it's the dog that barks the loudest that gets the most attention, so to speak. Uh, but we've got to make sure that we hear from everybody and the folks that don't necessarily live exactly in Oak Hill, but like our folks in, you know, in Scarborough, uh, and out in Salem-Gatewood and other areas, they still consider Oak Hill town. So they've got a, they've got to have some input in this as well. Um, also, our Build the Hill Community Meeting, uh, that one is on Monday, July fifteenth, and that's six P M. And this is at a new business location, uh, Love Chiropractic and Holistic Living. Address is five ninety-one Mall Road in Oak Hill. So years ago, that was a subway. Uh, and that's in the same strip mall area where, uh, the New River Convention Center is. Uh, Hilltop Coffee, El Rio is there. Well, we've got chiropractic and holistic living going in there as well. So we're going to have our hubcap meeting there, uh, next Monday. We've got some funds to spend from the West Virginia Community Development Hub, uh, some technical assistance funding. So any, any and all community members who want to show up, uh, you know, you get a preview of new business, which is always fun, and maybe help him move some furniture, maybe, um. But, uh, we'll also talk about how, uh, projects that we might use this, uh, we've got several thousand in technical assistance funding coming from West Virginia Community Development Hub, and this group is going to help us figure out how to spend that money and make some impact in the community. Uh, so on the comp plan up, our comprehensive plan update, uh, as of last week, the city was officially awarded the hundred and fifty thousand dollars that we asked for from the county commission out of the ARPA funding, uh, to complete our comprehensive plan, strategic plan, financial plan, and, um, enhanced zoning mapping. So that's, uh, we are very grateful to the commission for, for that. Uh, they've been great partners in this, and that's, uh, that has the potential to be a game changer, uh, positively impacting our city for the next twenty to twenty-five years. So having a hundred and fifty thousand in that is great. Uh, we have received all of the bids for the comp plan. Uh, we're going to go through those, go through the contracts line by line to make sure that, um, our plan to make the plan is perfectly in place before any of this starts, uh, so that what we have at the end, the end of this process is something that we can all be proud of. Um, there is a little note on the Collins Middle School property, uh, not a whole lot of update there yet. You should have an update on that next month. Uh, we've definitely done our part though in making sure that our legal representation has all the documents and some, uh, that they need from the past eighteen months. Uh, do you have an update on the progress on the bank building for you all as well? Um, when we spoke about this, I think that was last month, we talked about, uh, possibility of creating a, a request for proposals to see what kind of interest we had, uh, in that building. The, uh, the building commission liked the idea, uh, created the R F P. I'm just waiting on them to have another meeting, uh, so that we can have the approval for the R F P, so that then we can publish it. And then as soon as we've got their approval on that request for proposals, then we'll turn right around and ask for approval on the marketing plan, so that the second we get the R F P uh, approved, we'll be able to turn right around and start marketing and getting the word out right away, and that'll be a formal plan, not just throwing stuff on the wall to see what sticks. Uh, additional updates, I am doing Leadership West Virginia. Uh, it's a very worthwhile investment for me personally and definitely for the city. Uh, we've already made some great connections with Marshall University, uh, stronger connections in our tourism department as well, um. Seventeenth through nineteenth, I'm in the Eastern Panhandle, um, learning about the energy sector of our economy. And also, this last session, Leadership West Virginia was here doing tourism in Oak Hill and Fayetteville area. And, uh, we were able to coordinate a few volunteer projects. So one of those projects, we teamed up with, uh, the Mountain State Challenge Academy cadets in, uh, in Montgomery and completed, oh, Josh is gone, I think it was a half-mile trail section. So we had volunteers that built out an entire trail section for climbing access in Needles Eye. And then we also had a group that went to, um, the New River Burning and Nature Center, which is in Oak Hill City Limits. And we did lots of weed eating and getting stung by bees and clearing off the trails, uh, clearing off the trails there. So it was, it was very worthwhile work, and we're, we're grateful to both groups that participated in that also. Um, a few other updates on here, you know, vacant commercial properties ordinances and enforcement, something we're looking into pretty heavily right now. Uh, again, that's one of those situations, it's very, very important. Uh, and we can't just throw something on the wall and make sure it sticks. So what we're doing is going through evaluating, making sure the ordinances are effective, that we already have in the books. Uh, we'll propose changes to you all if we see fit. Uh, and then we'll absolutely make sure that as we go to enforce the ordinances we have, what we can enforce, we're able to do this fairly consistently and transparently. Because if we can't do that, then it's not morally right, I don't think, to even do it in the first place. So we're working on analyzing those and building our capacity to get to there. Uh, and that's all I've got for you guys for this month. Any questions? Thank you all.
My MS four report. And I was going to do last one. Okay, this is, um, about our pets, so remember, when your pet goes on the grass, it doesn't just go on the grass. Um, during rainfall, pet waste left on lawns, riverbanks, trails, and sidewalks washes into storm drains. These wastes of pathogens they contain bacteria, parasites, and viruses end up flowing directly into creeks, lakes, and rivers where they can harm human health and the environment. As pet waste decomposes, they demand a high level of oxygen from water. This demand can kill fish and plant life by reducing the amount of dissolved oxygen available to them. Recent studies have shown dogs and cats to be major sources of fecal contamination at local rivers and beaches. So the thing that you can do to help is, um, the next time you're caught outside in the rain, take a look at what's running off the street into the gutters and down storm drain inlets. You'll see that clean rainwater is quickly transformed into an oily, dirty mixture called urban runoff. You can't see the bacteria and viruses in storm runoff, but they're there. Do your part to keep our water clean. So pick up after your pet, bring a bag, clean it up, and dispose of it properly.
Chief Whitsman, do you have any, anything else?
No.
Chief Richardson? All right, council, can we get a motion to accept all of the department reports?
Make a motion to accept all the department reports.
Can you give a second?
I second.
Motion's been properly moved in second, that we accept all the department reports. All those in favor?
Ah.
All opposed? All that would want to council comments, motion's carried. All that would want to council comments. Anyone?
It's, uh, I just want to commend all the parks and rec people for doing what they're doing in the middle of the construction down there. Too, everything's starting to come together and look nice, and the skate park is, if you drive by there in the evening, I, I, I'll be honest, I was one that was like, you know, I don't I don't really know how much activity is going to be there. And probably like a lot of citizens was kind of questioned the activity of it. And it's really been good. It's, it's really been positive, so. Those, those guys, just reminded, don't we have a, we have a one this weekend, uh? We have a fun day at
At Josh Russell.
At Russell Matthews at lights this, this Saturday. And that park's looking good, too. The painted lines and the fence and I commend those guys, doing a great job.
I just want to echo on the skate park, because I'm like three doors away, so, but all ages. All ages, there's a lot of men there last night. We sat on Crozier's side deck for two hours. I mean, bicycles, skateboards, you name it. I mean, they were doing tricks and flips and at, at all ages. It's really nice, because it's brought out a lot of teens that you don't normally see. So it's gave them an avenue, so I appreciate it.
Future agenda items? Anyone? Yeah, I do. You have the thinking.
Well, I, I do, I, I have a comment. First of all, I, I just want to echo what was just said, then, thanks to all the employees for the work. Tyler, for the department, who's the city manager, they all have. I appreciate it. And I want, I wanted to touch on something, and I don't know if this will, if I'll, if I can put it into words, but the, you know, we all talk to residents as, as a representative of the city, members of council, mayor. And, um, our, our job is to, uh, determine policy of the city. We do that through ordinances mostly, resolutions, proclamations, and we set up processes for things to happen, the zoning, uh, code violations, our public safety through the police department. And oftentimes, I, I know I'm not, I'm not the only one, but oftentimes I get approached about someone who's in the process of, uh, unchange or a variance or as a citation or, uh, and I, I'm requested to intervene. And the process we set, we set up, the processes, have an appeals process built into them. It's a sort of, I mean, appeals, uh, municipal court, circuit court, all the way up to sometimes a Supreme Court of Appeals, a state Supreme Court of Appeals. So there are appeal systems set up for the processes we've established. And council is not part of the appeal, once someone gets into that process, and it's not, it's not fair for me to intervene, intervene for a friend of mine or, or, you know, worse yet, to intervene on someone's foe of mine. So it, it's, it's hard to explain that to residents and, uh, and, but but once you're in that process, it's, it's adjudicated or, or difficult for, for whatever, and, and so I, I want folks to know that I, I care very much, watch what's going on, but, but I'm not, and we are not the appeals process for many things that happens in the city. I, I don't know if that makes sense or not, Mr. Powell, like, you, you agree or?
No, you're, you're exactly right. In fact, it's really not appropriate for council to intervene and try to sway an admission or municipal judge or someone else, uh, on behalf of the citizen. So, uh, I think what you said, as well said, I think you are a hundred percent right. And I know everybody wants to help their friends, help their their neighbors, that's understandable. Uh, I think you can step back and just advise them that you can advise that, that you are not permitted to do so.
That's all. Thank you.
Anyone?
We do have a special meeting, uh, scheduled for July twenty-ninth. That is for our final hearing budget revision, but also we have, um, we'll have the first reading of the bond ordinance, and can you pull that up, Tyler, where I put that schedule? I think I put it maybe in or maybe it's in there. So this is for the sewer project that's coming up, um, we'll be opening the bids on July sixteenth. And then the sanitary board will have a special meeting. I think it will be on the same day as the council, but maybe during the day, probably, or maybe right before our meeting. And then we'll have that first reading of the bond ordinance on July twenty-ninth. And then we'll, we will have a second reading on August twelfth at our regular meetings. And then on September ninth, we'll have the public hearing and the final approvals. And, um, then the attorneys do all the other stuff, the closing. Except, mayor, you'll have to sign a lot of documents, and, uh, probably sharing, I have to sign.
Will you get a copy of that email to us?
It's in your pocket, so it's, it's in the folder, it was under department. And we'll send out that just in the month that, that things are.
Anyone? We do have a fundraiser for the Oak Leaf, uh, festival this weekend. Saturday, we'll be out at Black Bear selling hot dogs. And a reminder, on the twenty-seventh, there will be the Bears and Boos Festival here at the. And our regular meeting, of course, will be August twelfth. All eyes are clear. Consider yourselves adjourned. Thank you all for coming.